I now would like to call to order the York County Regular School Board Meeting for October 25th, 2021. In less than one week, we'll be heading into November, which seems unbelievable. But that means our holiday season is approaching quickly. We're almost finished with our first quarter of school, and there are many exciting things that are taking place with our students and in our classrooms, and we will celebrate several of those this evening. Before we begin, I would like to read the YCSD Mission Statement. "The mission of the York County School Division is to engage all students in acquiring the skills and knowledge needed to make productive contributions in the world." Next, I'm going to share some information regarding our pledge leader this evening, Kellen Warren, a fifth-grade student from TAB Elementary School. Kellen is a role model who consistently shows his roar, the TAB Elementary Behavior Matrix acronym for being respectful, orderly, achieving, and responsible. He is kind with his words and actions and recently participated as a student ambassador in a new student lunch bunch, helping new students in his class to feel welcomed and connected to their classroom community. Even Kellen's former teachers wanted to share about him. "I had Kellen in third grade," one teacher said, "and even then, he was the one who offered to help others at all times." Kellen was always incredibly helpful to both students and staff. He always completed his work, brought his assignments in on time, and worked hard in class. He also makes sure that students felt included and showed amazing school citizenship. Outside of school, Kellen is a Cub Scout in PAC 54. As a member of the PAC, he's participated in community service projects such as cleaning the grounds of the church where they meet and working on maintenance and repair jobs. He is also a busy athlete, playing baseball on the Hampton Roads Canes baseball team and the Peninsular Prowl hockey team. We are honored to have Kellen lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance this evening. Please stand.
[Inaudible]
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Kellen. Before we go on, I do want to apologize for not having the agendas printed out. We had a technical issue with the printer. We're working on getting that fixed to possibly have them for the second part of our meeting. But if you are interested, you can log into or go on to Board Docs through the York County School Board Board, School Board part of the website, and you can see the agenda that way. We are going to move on to our Seniors of the Month, and the following students are being recognized for their incredible achievements, and it's great to have some of them here with us. We're going to start with Bruton High School. Mr. Schaefer?
Thank you. Well, the Senior of the Month for Bruton High School is Logan Richardson. Go ahead and stand up. Yeah, there you go. And just to let you all know, my wife now feels officially old. She's a first-grade teacher, and she had Logan. Bruton High School is proud to honor Logan Richardson as our October Senior of the Month. Logan is a Bruton Scholar who has engaged in many activities, including the arts, STEM, athletics, scholarship clubs, and civic organizations. Logan is very humble and hardworking, and he is very focused on his goals and is always willing to help others. Logan has participated in School of the Arts Technical Theater, where he refined his skills to become a master carpenter and a lighting designer. He has also participated in representing Bruton as a member of the York County Youth Commission, Panther Achievement Leaders, and the Student-Athlete Leadership Team. Logan is a triathlete who has participated in cross-country, indoor-and-outdoor track, and soccer. He is a noteworthy scholar, earning As in all classes since the ninth grade, including sixth-advanced placement classes. Logan has earned a 4.76 GPA. He is a member of the National Honor Society, International Thespian Society, French Honor Society, Order of the Arrow, Boy Scouts of America National Honor Society, and serves as president of Mu Alpha Theta. Logan is also very active in our community. During high school, he has served as a navigator with the Jamestown-Yorktown Foundation and top soccer assistant coach. He is currently an Eagle Scout with Boy Scout Troop 155, AP Sharks Assistant Coach, and a lifeguard at Water Country USA. Logan plans to attend college in the fall to major in either finance or aerospace or electrical engineering. Congratulations, Logan. Good job.
Next, we'll hear about our Senior of the Month from Grafton High School, Mr. Richardson.
So our Senior of the Month from Grafton High School is, for this month, is Ben Madrigal. But he is off touring colleges with his family, so he could not make it tonight. So I'm going to read his at the next meeting. But tonight, we do have last month's Senior of the Month for September that couldn't make it, so they're here tonight. And Sidney Haas, if you could stand up. And you brought your, your parents are with you, Elizabeth and Kevin, are they here? Your mom is, if she could stand up, and your sister and your grandmother? Yeah, have the whole family stand up.
Well, Grafton High School is pleased to name Sidney Haas as Senior of the Month. Sidney is a committed student, a gifted athlete, and a selfless volunteer. I cannot think of a more deserving student for this honor than Sidney Haas. Academically, Sidney has always challenged herself by taking some of the most difficult classes Grafton offers. Sidney has taken over a dozen advanced AP courses in the fields of history, government, physics, statistics, calculus, English, and Spanish. Sidney's persistence and dedication in her education is reflected in her outstanding 4.57 GPA. Sidney is one of the top five percent, in the top five percent of her senior class, and I know she will continue to thrive in the next stage of her academic career. Sidney has gained an equal amount of knowledge from her academics and her extracurricular activities. Her commitment to Grafton's field hockey and soccer team has rewarded her with opportunities to lead her teammates and to take coaching and criticism while working towards a common goal. Her time in Grafton's chorus has taught her the importance of pursuing individual passions and being multi-dimensional. Sidney is also a gracious volunteer, learning hundreds, earning hundreds of service hours through both her church and community organizations. She knows the value of giving back and serving others. Sidney has proven through her academic abilities, extracurricular involvement, and personal character to be a student who is worthy of this recognition. As new administrators, Sidney has found ways to ease our transition into the new school year by volunteering to do the morning announcements or simply just greeting us with a friendly good morning in the hallway. I know high school is just the start for Sidney, and I know she will continue to prosper in college as she pursues her degree in humanities. Sidney's an amazing student athlete, even more impressive young lady, and I'm glad to name her Grafton High School Senior of the Month for the month of September. Congratulations.
To tell us about the TAB High School Senior of the Month, Mr. Myatt.
I'm delighted to introduce Claire Ross. I'd also like to congratulate, please, everybody stand. Clint and Christie, Ross, her parents, and also joining her is her sister Mary Kate and her brother Charlie. Welcome, I'm glad you all could attend. Claire is described as the Energizer Bunny in a big orange cake, so superhero powers, right? She's an integral part of so many aspects of life at TAB High, an outstanding student who will, who will complete the York County Honors Program. Claire rests comfortably within the top 20% of her class, and her coursework never takes a backseat to her incredibly busy schedule. Claire serves as the president of her senior class, and she has a growing list of ideas to carry out with students this school year. She has served as the president of the key club for the past two years, receiving numerous individual and group honors at the district level. She is a member of both audition choirs at TAB and serves as the president's, as the president of the girls' ensemble. Claire is the captain of the varsity soccer team as well as her travel team. Additionally, she is a member of numerous honor societies and stays extremely active in her church. Claire is always positive and upbeat. Her enthusiasm for creating new opportunities for classmates seems endless. Claire's sponsors say they occasionally feel like they must say no to yet another new and great idea in order for Claire to get some sleep and rest. Claire moves TAB forward every single day. She, she never seems to put herself first. The welfare of others is always her top priority. Claire's presence is amazing, and all at TAB benefit from her positive energy and spirit. She even plays the ukulele. You can't go wrong with that, right? We're so proud of presenting Claire as the October Senior of the Month. Thank you for your leadership, your spirit, and your wonderful personal example. Thanks, Claire.
Ms. Garaltz, with York High School Senior of the Month.
Absolutely. Daniel, would you stand up with your family, please? Daniel Young is his, is here with his parents, Li Hong Zhang and Yizhi Liang. York High School is proud to announce Daniel Liang as our October Senior of the Month. Daniel is an amazing student and talented athlete. He's excelled academically throughout his time at York High School and is a student in York County School Division's honors program. Daniel has been recognized as an AP Scholar with Distinction by College Board and has received highest academic honors for the past three years. He holds membership in National Honor Society, Spanish Honor Society, and Mu Alpha Theta. Daniel is an exceptional athlete. He has competed on York High School's varsity swim team since 2019 and has received, received a varsity letter each year. He has also received recognition as a USA Swimming 2020-2021 Scholastic All-American Athlete. Daniel has competed and placed in several state and national competitions. He also competes on the Coast Guard Blue Dolphins Swimming Club and is a member of the national team. Daniel is very involved in his church's youth group and currently serves as vice president. He also assists during church service as an IT technician. In addition to volunteering at church, he has volunteered at Riverside Regional Medical Center during the summer months. Daniel, congratulations on being York High School's October Senior of the Month. We're very proud of you.
Congratulations to all of our Seniors of the Month. Moving on, we do have a few Student Service Awards to share with the, share with us the first award winner, Mr. Schaefer.
Yes, thank you. Student Service Award is for Grant Jorgensen. Grant here, yeah, there you go. With his principal, with his principal, Mary Lugo. Grant Jorgensen is TAB Elementary's Student Service Award winner this month. Grant is a fifth-grade student and has been a TAB Tiger for the past three years. As a son of a military family, Grant has lived in five different states and attended two different schools. It is for this reason that he has taken a particular fondness to our Anchored for Life team, a school team that supports our transitioning military children and greater military community. He was also nominated by his former fourth-grade teacher to represent our student body this year as a team leader on our Anchored for Life team. Team leaders identify and assist transitioning students with resiliency tools and resources, provided guided tours for new students, and coordinate community service projects like our recent Helping Hands Donation Drive in support of families affected during Operation Allies Refuge. As a member of our TAB Elementary School News Team, he is reliable, encouraging to others, and goes above and beyond in the presentation and delivery of the morning announcements for our school. He is someone that any student or staff member can depend on at any time. His fourth-grade teacher has shared that last year he would pause his play in a game or activity if he saw that students were walking around alone. He would not continue his play until all students were invited to play and were included. Grant is a Cub Scout in PAC 358 at Hydenwood Presbyterian Church and has received his Arrow of Light, the highest rank in Cub Scouts. He is proud to serve his troop and the community by helping with service projects such as selling pumpkins for church missions and making meals for the homeless in the winter. We thank Grant for his service, and we are proud to call him a TAB Tiger.
It's my pleasure to now welcome Ann Elizabeth Cherion up and the principal at Grafton Middle School, Ms. Anthony. Grafton Middle School is proud to nominate Ann Elizabeth Cherion for the Student Service Award. Ann sails as a Clipper, which means she is a safe, always respectful, intellectual school leader. She is a member of the National Junior Honor Society and has earned straight As throughout her middle school career. Ann is a Clipper Ambassador and a member of the Principal's Advisory Committee. She plays the guitar and practices her craft as a brown belt in martial arts when she is not at school. She also enjoys giving back to the community and helping those less fortunate. Ann has had a servant's heart since elementary school when she volunteered to pick up trash to help keep the school premises clean. She works in food banks during the holidays and organizes backpacks for students in need during the beginning of the school year. Ann has held the title of Environmental Ambassador for the 24 News US Media as she works to expand her reach outside of Virginia. She has participated in the Staten Island Bay Cleanup in New York, and she plans to continue. Ann says her mother is her inspiration, always doing good for others, and she wants to continue to be a leader in service like her mother. Sounds like you have some wonderful role models. Congratulations. We have a few Community Volunteers of the Month we would like to recognize. Mr. Myatt, I believe you have the first one.
I do. I have Mrs. Sheena Jorgensen, please. TAB Elementary. And as was mentioned, this is a military family, so we want to again thank them for their service and their sacrifice. We greatly appreciate it on our behalf. TAB Elementary is proud to recognize Mrs. Sheena Jorgensen as our Volunteer of the Month. When Mrs. Jorgensen and her family arrived at TAB Elementary three years ago, she began communicating with us immediately and wanted to get involved. She was excited about helping at school and started volunteering in small ways. But last year, she stepped up in a big way to be president of the PTA and is currently serving her second term again as president. Leading the PTA through the challenges and opportunities of last school year was not easy, but Sheena did it with grace, kindness, and a whole lot of creativity. We continue to have monthly PTA meetings in a virtual format, and she chaired the meetings from home while being a mom to three active elementary-age children. She led a small but dedicated executive board in numerous events such as organizing treats for the students during our first drive-up open house and frisbees for every student leaving for summer vacation. Mrs. Jorgensen also led numerous other activities, including staff luncheons and snacks in the lounge, spiritware sales, fundraising nights at local restaurants, and most importantly, a walk-a-thon which raised over $14,000, with every dollar going back directly to support TAB Elementary. We would like to extend our gratitude and thanks for everything Sheena did to keep the PTA operating this year. She did it with a smile, and we so appreciate her commitment and dedicated service. Thank you, Sheena.
Now to share with us the Volunteer of the Month from Grafton Middle School, Mr. Richardson.
Thank you, Mr. Higginbotham. Our Volunteer of the Month is Latoya Lawson. If she come forward with Ms. Kiana Anthony, the principal. Thank you. So Ms. Lawson is the PTA President at Grafton Middle School. She cares about our school, our community, and has been a member of the PTSA for three years. Mrs. Lawson stepped into the leadership position because she was concerned that no one else would. As president, she organizes the committees and recruits volunteers that bring meaningful experiences to Grafton Middle School students. Mrs. Lawson is a full-time working mom with a spouse that travels for work, but she finds the time to dedicate toward the success of our students. Her efforts are not only for Grafton Middle School students, but for all students. She volunteers her time in supporting young people as they transition to college. Mrs. Lawson works to help students and their families understand the college application process, complete the FAFSA, and develop competitive college applications. She is a member of Calvary Revival Church and encourages her son to lead in service through his involvement in his youth group. Grafton Middle School is proud to have Mrs. Lawson as the Volunteer of the Month. Congratulations.
Next, for our York Foundation for Public Education presentation, Mr. Schaefer will share some more remarks.
Well, as Ms. Christina Head, York Foundation for Public Education Board Member, to step forward as we present the following awards. First, congratulations to Kellen Warren, a fifth-grade grader from TAB Elementary School for reciting the Pledge of Allegiance at tonight's School Board Meeting. We would also like to recognize tonight's Student Service Award recipients. Grant Jorgensen from TAB Elementary School and Ann Elizabeth Cherion from Grafton Middle School, and also our Seniors of the Month, Logan Richardson from Bruton High. Yeah, come on up. Benjamin Madrigal from Grafton High. He couldn't attend this, this evening, but Claire Ross is here for TAB instead. And Daniel Lang from York High, also being recognized as Sidney Haas, September Senior of the Month for Grafton High. Special gifts from Cookie Text and Edible Tweet are being presented tonight on behalf of the York Foundation for Public Education. In partnership with Jean Fioka of Cookie Text and Edible Tweet, a Walmart gift card is also being presented to each award recipient on behalf of a foundation supporter. Congratulations.
Did everyone get the pictures they needed?
Yep, yep. Picture time.
Next up on our agenda is the Virginia School Boards Association Academy Award. Dr. Shandor, would you like to share some remarks?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Richardson, and good evening, Board members. Each year, the Virginia School Boards Association recognizes Board members across the state for their dedication, time, and hard work in improving boardsmanship skills through VSPA meetings, conferences, board development and training, and active involvement in the association. There are five levels of awards based on the points earned from July 1 through June 30. The awards being presented tonight are the Achievement Award in bronze pin to Mr. Richardson. Let's give him a big round of applause. Do you want to pause for a photo? Just kidding.
And you called Mr. Higginbotham Mr. Richardson.
I'm sorry. It's been a rough couple, a couple of months, sorry. All right, the next Achievement Award goes to Dr. Shandor. Congratulations to him. All right, the next one. The next award of recognition goes to the real Mr. Higginbotham and Ms. Garaltz. So let's give them a big round of applause.
Thank you very much. Next, we move on to our Accent on Academics. Dr. Shandor, I believe you have some more details.
I do, thank you, Mr. Higginbotham. Tonight's Accent on Academics project is 2021 SOA Literary Arts One Act Commission Competition. That's a lot for me to say.
It is.
During the 2021 school year, York County School of the Arts sponsored its first in-house competition to commission student-written one-acts specifically created for SOA and MSAM theater class performances. Nearly 40 literary arts students submitted their plays to be evaluated by both SOA teachers and professional members of the theatrical community. Ms. Laura Maney will now come and share more about this project and introduce her participants.
Ms. Maney? Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Higginbotham, members of the board, Dr. Shandor, educators, and families. During the 2020-2021 school year, the York County School of the Arts, or SOA, sponsored its first in-house competition to commission student-written one-acts specifically created for performance by SOA and middle-school arts magnets, also known as MSAM, theater arts classes. To introduce you to this project, we have a video from Lily, a June 2021 graduate who participated in this event and who is now studying art history at Marist College in Florence, Italy.
Ciao, buongiorno. Welcome to the Renaissance city of Florence, Italy. I am so excited to be getting the chance to talk to you today about our playwriting contest that we had during my senior year of high school. Every year, SOA literary arts students participate in Spark New Voices for the Theater competition. However, due to COVID, the competition was canceled. Instead of letting us go without a playwriting competition, though, SOA decided to create one. The literary arts students in all years wrote short one-act plays to be judged by outside critics at the end of the competition. This was amazing because it ensured that we didn't have to go without constructive feedback from professionals, even in the thick of COVID. And my piece, I'm honored to say, won first place for its category and is now going to be performed by the senior literary arts students at SOA.
Good evening, I'm Dr. Renee Kingen, and this is my 19th year teaching at SOA. And our students have been competing in the New Voices for the Theater competition since the early 1990s. In New Voices, winning playwrights participate in a summer residency where their plays are professionally workshopped and produced on stage, and we take great pride in the fact that SOA students have earned places as resident and non-resident winners nearly every year since 1990, which I don't even remember because I wasn't, no, we, never mind. I digress. When Spark canceled New Voices last year due to COVID, we decided to keep the playwriting project as part of our virtual curriculum and conduct an in-house competition of our own. Students' plays were categorized by cast size and age level and were evaluated based on a range of criteria, including their suitability for being produced virtually by MSAM or SOA Theater Arts classes. Of the winning plays, four were chosen for virtual production during the 2020-21 school year, and one, the one you just heard about, will be produced in our current school year. Please enjoy some short clips from three of those plays.
Hello, my name is Ava, and my play was titled Kindergarten Martian, which is exactly what it sounds like. It was about trying to find an undercover alien in a kindergarten Zoom class. They say, they say write what you know, and I had a lot of personal experience with the subject matter, the kindergarteners, that is, not the aliens. My family was fostering two boys around kindergarten age from the end of 2019 to the beginning of 2021, and we experienced kindergarten Zoom classes far more than was comfortable. If you're wondering how a kindergarten Zoom class works, the answer is not well. A lot of the characters in my play are based off of my own experiences with these kindergarten children. Some of the lines are even direct quotations. I don't know where the aliens came from. I don't know why there are aliens in my play. I guess it was just fate. Writing a play with the purpose of being performed by others was very different from writing a play for the fun of it. I knew from the very beginning that my play, if chosen, would be performed by 20 middle schoolers, which is a lot of characters to keep track of, produced virtually and had to be so within a certain time limit and with limited resources. So I had to be realistic, which is very hard to do when one is writing a play about kindergarten aliens.
Hello, my name is Amelia, and I wrote The Candlestick, which is a dramatic murder mystery among friends. Last year, having an idea of who may perform my one-act helped me visualize my characters and plot throughout my writing process. Since I've seen various SOA and MSAM productions, I had a better idea of what I should expect if my play were to be adapted to the stage, which proved to be helpful in generating ideas. Additionally, the SOA competition was open to different types of one-acts with different number of actor requirements, which allowed me to be, write more, which allowed me to write more creatively as opposed to trying to fit into one set of requirements. Being able to see my one-act come to life virtually was an extremely rewarding experience, not just because I got to see my body of work go through the process of an actual published play being adapted, but it was also beneficial for my own review process. As I got to watch my one-act being performed, I was able to further understand the dynamics of plays and see how some things may work better than others, like where dialogue may have felt unactual. Ultimately, working on my play and seeing it come to life was one of the highlights of my school career.
Hi, I'm Abby, and the title of my play is All You Need is Honesty, which is about a middle-school girl with superhearing powers who has to learn how to socially interact with others and not just rely on her ability to get things her way. I came up with my topic by doing a lot of word games and other activities that helped us come up with some ideas, and somehow during that time, I came up with, I came up with writing a girl, about a girl with superpowers. As I was writing my play, I was able to get a lot of feedback, which I think helped to improve my writing skills a lot. And even after I won the school-sponsored play competition and the SOA theater class began to act it out, I received feedback to make changes and revisions that would make my play even better for an in-person or, in this case, virtual performance. And although it was different, I still found it really cool to hear the dialogue I wrote myself being spoken out loud and performed. That was something I'd never seen before, and it was nice to see my work performed, even if it was on a screen. I do feel like it would be different to see my play performed in person, and I do hope there's a possibility I will get to see my written work performed in person in front of a live audience in the future.
Good evening, I am Dr. Justin Jeru. My literary arts 12 class is currently producing the play written by Lily, the student you met in our first video. Four literary arts seniors are performers in the show, and the others are acting as musicians, designers, and technicians. Completing the full production process in class has shown these talented students the value of artistic collaboration. That production, To Hear the Voice, to See the Soul, will be part of SOA's Evening of the Arts to be held on Friday, December 3. We hope that you'll be able to attend. We will also have flyers available during the break, which list all of our upcoming productions this school year. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
So how long is a one-act play, whether it's page length or time?
In this case, they were required to have their plays, the performance time be about 20 minutes long.
I don't think I could write a 20-minute... Oh, that's impressive.
As a matter of fact, last Saturday, I got to attend the two one-act plays that they are doing right now for SOA, and it was very good. I mean, if you have never seen a SOA play, you need to go, because it's going to be some of the best production that you're going to see.
Thank you. We have flyers.
If I may, I'd love to ask a question to some of the students, if you guys would come forward. So any future plans to continue in theater?
Um, no.
I think you should, because you have a great sense of humor.
One-act plays are actually my least favorite form of writing.
Really? What's your favorite one?
Um, I write a lot of poetry and essays typically.
You've got a niche for humor, though, I'll tell you. How about you?
Um, I'm honestly not sure, but I really do enjoy writing, and if I had more free time, I would probably be writing a lot more than I do right now, since most of the time right now, I'm just writing for school.
Writing the one-acts has actually, like, shown me how much I enjoy, like, storytelling, so I'm keeping my options open in terms of what I want to do.
Fantastic, fantastic. Thank you all so much, we appreciate it.
We will have a brief recess here, so we can have the opportunity to meet and congratulate the award winners and the presenters this evening. Thank you. And I'll call the regular meeting back in session. Up next on our agenda, we begin our business portion of our meeting. The first part of business is unfinished business, but we have none, so we'll move right on to presentations. We will start with the WHRO 2020-21 Annual Impact Statement. Dr. Shandor?
Thank you, Mr. Higginbotham. Now, we're going to have Mr. Elmer Seward, Vice President of Education for WHRO, who will make a brief presentation regarding the annual impact statement and educational products and services. Mr. Seward, thank you.
Thank you. Chairman Higginbotham, members of the board, Dr. Shandor, thank you for having me here this evening. Normally, I'm sitting in the cheap seats, and Bert Schmidt, the CEO, would make this presentation, but unfortunately, he wasn't able to make it this evening, so I'm pitch hitting for him. I believe at your desk, you have a hard copy of the annual impact statement. This is a report that WHRO produces every year and distributes to our member-owned school divisions, giving you a detailed information regarding the education resources and services that we have produced and provided to the school divisions during that year. WHRO is rather unique in the fact that it is owned by 21 school divisions in the Hampton Roads region. In fact, it began in 1961, when Hampton City Schools and Norfolk Public Schools decided that they didn't have enough math and science teachers, and if they put a teacher on TV and broadcast into their classroom, they would be able to reach more students. And that's how WHRO began. Then, over the years, more school divisions joined WHRO, and now we have 21, York County being one of those school divisions. And we are unique, we are the only public media station in the country that is owned by a collaboration of school divisions. So, one of the resources that we provide to our owner-member school divisions is eMediaVA. It is a learning object repository with tens of thousands of educational resources that teachers and students can use in the classroom. They are all searchable by SOL, and they are all free. In collaboration with the Virginia Department of Education, we also make this available to school divisions throughout Virginia. We have seen significant growth in the use of eMediaVA over the last two years, as teachers found they had an even greater need for digital resources. Last school year, I believe, we had more than 1,400,000 page views in eMediaVA, and usage has not dropped off this year. As teachers have returned to face-to-face instruction, they're still relying on those resources in their classroom. So these can be used online, they can be used in face-to-face instruction, students can use them to do research. This is just one of the resources that we provide. We also conduct professional development for teachers in our region, and you'll see a listing of the professional development sessions that we ran last year. Most of those were webinars because of COVID, but we also do face-to-face training with teachers as well. And when you look at the list of items that we... And when you look at the list of items that we ran professional development on last year, many of those came directly from the superintendents, who said, "Our teachers need information on this topic. Our teachers need training in this," and we provided that. We are there to support the school divisions and to support what the superintendents say their teachers need. Another resource that we provide to all of our school divisions is a set of online courses. These are fully textbook independent. It's an entire year. Most of these are high school courses. A teacher and a student can use these, and their students can use these, and can actually use this for the entire year without ever having to pick up another resource. Everything the students need to do, everything the teachers need to use, we include in the course. Discussion boards, assessments, interactivities so students can practice and get immediate feedback on how they're doing. And you'll see the listing of those 27 courses up there. They can be used in a face-to-face setting as well. A teacher can pull any piece of that and use it as they like. They can also be used in a blended environment. We also, last year, delivered to the Virginia Department of Education the African-American History Online Modules. Governor Northam directed WHRO and the Virginia Department of Education and Virtual Virginia to collaborate to bring forward an African-American History Online Course. We worked very closely with the VDOE in developing the design for the course and putting together those modules that are used as part of the course. It was piloted last year by 16 school divisions and now is available for every school division in the state to use. When COVID hit, everybody was scrambling. And our local superintendent said to us, "We're really concerned about our very youngest learners with remote learning. Can you do something for us?" And almost at the same time, Dr. Lane at the Virginia Department of Education came to us and said, "Can you do something for our very youngest learners?" And so, we very quickly stood up Virginia TV Classroom or VATV Classroom. We hired teachers, we trained them. They were all producing these videos through Zoom at their home. We put it on TV, we packaged it as a one-hour package of instruction. The Virginia Department of Education came back to us later and said, "You know, could we have something for four through seven?" So, we quickly stood that up, rolled that out. We gave it to every one of the public media stations in Virginia. They also broadcast it at the same time. The beginning of the 2020-21 school year, the Virginia Department of Education said, "Can you do it again?" Obviously, the content needed to be different. We were at the beginning of the school year. So, we rolled out another version of VATV Classroom, and for the first six weeks of school, we did season two. And I'm going to show you just a brief clip.
Attention, parents and students. Virginia TV Classroom is making it easy again for you to learn in your living room. We're back for season two. Students kindergarten to seventh grade tune in weekdays to see teacher-led and SOL-aligned instruction. It's Virginia's teachers teaching on TV. Watch Virginia TV Classroom and learn more.
Beginning September 14th at 11:00 on WHRO.
Virtual Virginia, we, from the very first day of Virtual Virginia, we were involved with that program. In fact, the Virginia Department of Education came to WHRO and said, "Can you help us stand this up?" And we did. I think I was the second employee that Virtual Virginia hired and worked for them for 10 years before moving into other positions with WHRO. In the past few years, we've been involved with the technical support of Virtual Virginia, providing the learning management system, the student information system, and technical support for students and teachers. We like to celebrate smart kids. York County evidently has some very impressive students. I just got a chance to see that. And in fact, it's a little difficult to follow them, to be honest with you. I'm a little intimidated. But we have several competitions and opportunities for students to shine. One of them is the Writers Contest, PBS Kids Writers Contest. We also call it our Young Storytellers Contest, where elementary students can write and illustrate stories. They're submitted, they're judged, and then we celebrate the winners. It gives students an opportunity to practice writing skills, to learn about story narrative and relationship of images to story. It's a great learning opportunity for students. The Regional Spelling Bee, we also host that. And in the past, we have broadcast it live from the WHRO studios. Scripps has changed their rules just a bit. You can no longer broadcast live. They're worried about some of the words that are not in the book getting out to other areas that have not had their beat yet. And so, we'll be conducting it. Last year, we conducted it virtually. We weren't going to let it slide. This year, we plan on conducting it face-to-face again in our studio, the end of March, and then we will broadcast at the beginning of April. The Great Computer Challenge. We had the 36th Great Computer Challenge. We weren't going to go 35 years and go, "We have a hiccup." So, we did it virtually. We had six Zoom rooms. We had, I think, 27 breakout rooms, judges and monitors and all of those. Hours and hours and hours of planning ahead of time to make sure that that worked. We wanted to make sure that students were able to compete in that. And then, we give away trophies and medals. We celebrate students. It's a great day. We plan on doing it face-to-face again this year. Two different Saturdays at Old Dominion University. We partner with them. And in the spring, there will be the juniors competition for elementary students and then the senior competition for middle school and high school students. American Graduate. We have focused this year with the American Graduate Initiative to talk to students about what do you do when you finish school? And specifically, we focused on girls and looking for careers that they might not normally think would be a career for a female. Non-traditional roles. And I want to show you just a brief clip of some of the work we've done with that.
Hey ladies, check out my cool t-shirt. And check out Pure and Swan.
I am strong.
You got that right.
I think I might be.
We love a challenge.
I have nine skills.
I work like a girl.
Are you ready for this?
And then, we have a number of services that we provide for our early learners. We have three vans, two last year, a literacy van and a STEM van, that go out to schools, conduct programs, SOL-aligned lessons. We hand out books to students because we think students need to be readers. We want to encourage them to read. We want to make sure they have material they can read. And so, we visit schools and hand those out. We're putting in service this year, a third van, our environmental education van. It will also go out to schools and conduct activities with students. We believe, we're hoping, that this year, we're also going to have a little program that can go along with it. So, there's a program for all of the students and then the van lessons. And you can see some of the services that we provide for our early learners. Literacy van, reading camps, coding camps, reading buddies, library corners. We try to be very active, especially in Title I schools, and come by invitation. And we're always grateful to be invited into schools and to help build literacy skills and STEM skills and help students learn about the environment. And that brings me to the bottom line. School boards want to know, "What do we get from this?" And I think on page 13 of your impact statement, you will see where we try to give you some monetary information regarding the services we provide, the value associated with those, and what it costs you. If I remember correctly, I believe your return on investment for York County was $18.75 per dollar invested. So, you, and that's direct services. That's not even touching the indirect services that we provide. For example, the Kids 24/7 Channel, which provides for those preschool students opportunities to learn while watching, while being entertained. None of those programs are pure entertainment. They're all designed first instructionally and then to entertain, to draw students into that instruction. So, that brings me to the end of my presentation, and I'll be glad to answer any questions, if you have any.
So, Elmer, I'd just like to say that I'm part of the committee, of course. I come over there every quarter for the meetings, or we've been doing it virtually here lately. But I'm always impressed about the new innovations that you have for students and for teachers, for teaching them. The presentations that we see when we go over there, there's always something going, something new, and you're staying on top of it. But I do know when I first started doing a tour of WHRO, there was a little room where volunteers would go in and would read books over the radio or TV. Do y'all still do that?
And that, yes, it's called The Voice. And that's where we have volunteers come in and read the newspaper.
Right.
For those people who may be sight impaired and may not have access to that, they can read, they can listen to The Voice and be kept up to date on the local news.
And the reason I bring that up is because it's not just our students in school, but the community as well that you help with, and that's just a portion of it. So, anyway, I just wanted to mention that. Thank you.
Thank you. And you'll see a lot of those services listed in those indirect services that you see on that return to, return on investment page.
Perfect.
Thank you. And yes, we did have to suspend that during COVID, but we have started that back up again.
I just want to say thank you for listening and for being so responsive. It sounds like when a superintendent or someone's reaching out to you, you guys are responding in a timely manner and providing that service, so thank you.
Well, that's our whole reason for being. I mean, we are there to serve the school divisions. So, thank you.
It truly takes a village, you know, to raise children and to educate children. And the real collaborative effort that you guys provide, the school divisions, is great, and we appreciate that work. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Elmer.
Thank you.
Our next presentation this evening is an operational update. Dr. Shandor, would you like to add some comments?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Higginbotham. We're going to bring up Dr. Carroll for your monthly operations update, our chief operations officer. Dr. Carroll?
Thank you, Dr. Shandor. Chairman Higginbotham, members of the board, here's your report that you ask for every meeting. And hopefully, I've got some good news for a change. So, first of all, our locality, you know, levels of community transmission, you can see that they are now starting to fall. We had about a three-week period there where we were just bouncing up and down between 165 and 200 persons per one, or cases per 100,000. Today, we, after the weekend, we stand at 113.4. You'll remember that the threshold from substantial to high transmission is at 100. And so, we are finally starting to see some drop off after, after we had some, you know, right at the beginning of the school year, it was high and it dropped quickly. We thought it was going to continue, but it's kind of stalled out. So, good to see those numbers start to fall at a quicker rate now. And we are seeing that in our local positive cases in the schools and in our transmission and in our quarantines. So, here you see the numbers that we had this morning, which were only 18 positive cases across the whole school division. That, of course, we will have our usual Monday bounce. We'll be adding some, and those are probably up already. However, that baseline number keeps dropping every week, so that's encouraging. And also, when you look at our related quarantines, we were at 74 this morning. So, if you add the 18 and the 74, you're below 100 for the first time since we've started school. And you'll remember that we had about 300 students that were affected in that first week of school. So, we're really starting to see about as numbers fall, and that means less students missing class. And that's what we're primarily interested in. And to give you update on vaccinations, you can see these were taken this morning, but they were from data posted October 24th. And we're just incrementally, we keep, we keep moving along. These are the groups that have at least one dose, and now the 12 to 15s are up to 54.5% with 45.4 being fully vaccinated. 16 to 17-year-olds are now at 62.5% having an initial dose and 53.5% being fully vaccinated. And then, when you look at all of the adults in the community, at 72.6% for a first dose and 66.2% being fully vaccinated. So, incrementally, getting better. Not a lot of new news on the vaccination front. We are still waiting for a decision from the FDA on, you know, shots and vaccinations for students five to 11 years old. Tentative dates have been set by us. We're not going to release those until we have a little more information, but we have shot clinics that have been planned, and we have cooperating people to help out in taking care of that. And we have sites, and as soon as we get, you know, a clear picture of when we would be able to do that so that we could help the community get vaccinations quickly, we will release that. But we are ready to do that as soon as we hear. Could be as early as this week. I've also heard information later in the day saying the first week of November. So, this could get very close. And we continue to still not have any guidance from the state on whether they're going to make vaccination mandatory for K-12 educational staff. So, we still await whether that's going to happen. Before I leave vaccination, move on to other transportation updates. I neglected to create a slide for you, and I apologize. Just another piece that's connected to health is the, Virginia Department of Health has a Virginia Youth Survey, and that's something that's administered every two years and state, schools around the state help out with that. Just wanted to let you know that we received, we had two schools that were going to be surveyed this year by selection. We reviewed the questions when they became available to us. We had objections to a few of the questions and to the developmental appropriateness of some of the age groups that were going to be asked these questions, so we politely declined. And so, we will not be administering that survey this year. So, just wanted you to be aware of that, but I apologize for not having a slide. Want to update you on transportation. We remain significantly understaffed, even though we added a couple new drivers the last time I talked to you. We do still have three new hires and some other promising leads that are in the training pipeline. One of them has the current CDL. When they have that CDL, it's only seven hours of training, and then they can be ready to be on the road. And so, that will probably get completed with at least one person this week. And you may have heard, we had a tough morning today. We had seven drivers that were going to be out and another eight that called in sick this morning. So, 15 out of about 90 bus drivers, that was a significant impact. So, we hope that that's not going to be the case tomorrow. I know we only have two that are already called out. So, we should see a more normal day tomorrow. But just wanted you to let you know the scope of what we dealt with today. And other updates, I want to share with you on behalf of the school leadership or the division leadership, that we, we recognize that, you know, our staffs are really going through a hard time. They're being pulled in a lot of directions, especially when you have absences. You have teacher absences, you have para absences, you have substitutes. We don't have enough substitutes, and same thing with buses. This requires teachers to have to do a lot of extra duty that we would not want to ask them to do, but sometimes there's no other choice. And so, we recognize that this is adding a lot of stress to the day of our instructional staff. And we know that having adequate planning time is an important piece to a high-quality instructional program. Therefore, we are now evaluating options to incorporate some planning time before the winter break through some school schedule adjustments. And they could include one of, one or a combination of these three options, adjusting full days to early release days, adjusting scheduled early release days to full teacher workday and student adjusting scheduled early release days to full teacher workday and student holiday, and adjusting full days to a teacher workday and student holidays. And that concludes my report, but I think Dr. Shandor would like to speak at this point.
Thank you, Dr. Carroll. And before he accepts any, any other questions related to any of the other topics, I want to share just a couple more details around what our team is looking at. So we tentatively, we tentatively have begun looking at adjusting student schedules during the weeks of November eighth and December sixth. We haven't selected a day yet, but that's sort of the range that we're looking at, November eighth and the week of December sixth. But we want to have further conversations with our principal advisory team to get some additional feedback from them, to ensure that we identify dates that are going to support high-quality instruction, data-driven planning to meet the instructional needs of our kids. But we also want to provide families with as much notice as possible. So, that's if we, if we make these changes. Unfortunately, the board does not meet again until November eighth, which would either not provide families advanced notice or push potential dates for planning time further down the road. So I know our teachers could use this time sooner rather than later.
So, Mr. Chair, is it a possibility we could present a motion to allow the superintendent at his discretion to make this happen, since we won't be meeting again until afterwards? It'd be a little bit of a time delay.
Yes, I, I believe in, and correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Berry, that we can create a motion second and then vote on it to allow Dr. Shandor the ability to adjust the calendar as needed if we specify exactly what timeframes we're talking about.
That is correct.
Okay. And, and I just do just want to say, I appreciate Dr. Shandor. I know a few of us brought this to you a couple weeks ago. We mentioned the possibility of providing some additional planning time for teachers, and we appreciate you taking it back to your principals and your team and taking the time. I believe he called us all last week, and we sort of discussed it and talked through a couple options, so I appreciate you bringing that out and so quickly, having some thoughts and possibilities with it. Does anyone have any other questions for Dr. Shandor or Dr. Carroll? Yes. Mr. Schaefer.
Well, I was just going to say, thank you, Dr. Carroll, for the feedback on the survey. I mean, that was one of the things that I saw and was so happy that we took action on, and I appreciate it. The other thing is, I'd like to second his motion.
Okay, we just need to specify.
Whenever it happens.
Specify the motion. I can specify the motion. I think I have it, have it down. A motion to add additional planning time for teachers, allowing the superintendent the discretion to adjust the division calendar up to seven hours, I believe is what we were talking, or to be changed from instructional time to student holiday time, spread out over two dates to be determined by the superintendent.
Okay. Any other questions or concerns in the board? Okay, do we have a second for the motion? If Mr. Schaefer seconds it. Ms. Ford, we have a motion and a second. You may pull the board.
Yes, the motion was made by Mr. Richardson and seconded by Mr. Schaefer for the board to allow Dr. Shandor to use his discretion to adjust the calendar up to seven days, I mean, seven hours as he sees fit.
That'd be nice, too.
So, Mr. Schaefer?
Yes.
Ms. Corral?
Yes.
Mr. Maya?
Yes.
Mr. Richardson?
Yes.
And Mr. Higginbotham?
Yes.
The motion passed five to zero. Thank you.
Ms. Ford's an advocate for teacher planning time, clearly.
Dr. Shandor, not to put you on the spot, do you have any idea of when you might have more information to share with the community about the dates so that they can have plenty of time to think about childcare and issues like that?
I have, we have a meeting scheduled tomorrow, I believe, late afternoon or early. It's around twelve-thirty-ish. I don't have my calendar right in front of me, but with the principal advisory group, so we'll, we have some other executive staff that we'll meet with. Hopefully, we can fine-tune some things then and hopefully get a message out midday Wednesday, which would be ideal.
Great. Great. Thank you very much. Are there any other questions for Dr. Carroll about any, anything you presented tonight? All right. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Carroll.
Our next presentation is a staffing update. Dr. Shandor.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Higginbotham. We're going to bring up Dr. Amanda Corbin-Staten. She's the associate director for chief human, I'm like stumbling all over my words.
Start over.
Dr. Corbin-Staten, tell them your title. She's, she's going to present the staffing update.
Associate Director of Human Resources.
Thank you.
You're very welcome, Dr. Shandor.
Good evening, Chairman Higginbotham, members of the board, and Dr. Shandor. Thank you for the opportunity to provide October's staffing update. First, we'll begin with licensed positions. As you will see on this slide, at the elementary level, we are currently hiring for the following positions: five special education teachers, two K-5 teachers, one teacher in pre-K, a school counselor, an art teacher, an ESL teacher, a reading specialist. Breaking news, I did find out today from our staffing office that today paperwork came in for that reading specialist job, so it is in the process of being filled. We know that these reports are snapshots in time, and we're delighted to be able to bring you good news on that front. Library media specialist, one, and teacher, early childhood special education, also one. So any folks out there listening who have moved into our area, we look, encourage you to go to our website and join the York County School Division. Moving on to secondary positions, we have two science teachers, two English teachers, as well as a special education teacher at the secondary level, a math teacher, a CTE teacher in business, history and social sciences, a reading specialist at the secondary level, as well as a .5 encore teacher for one of our middle schools. For other licensed positions, we still are looking for folks to hire for our newly budgeted positions, and I know that in previous updates, Dr. Vladu has gone over that list of positions. And so I can also go over that again if you have questions, but I am sure that you're familiar with those positions. We have three speech-language pathologists, as well as a coordinator of school counseling, a social worker, and an instructional innovation coach, which also was filled today. Now we'll move on to our non-licensed positions. In the instructional realm, we know that there are non-licensed positions that do work in classrooms and that do support students and teachers, and so we have some more good news to share. I do believe that Dr. Vladu's last update, there were twenty-eight vacancies for special education para positions, and within that time to now, we have filled eleven of those positions. And so we're very, very grateful for the folks who've joined our team, and we still are looking for seventeen others to do the same. We have twelve general para educator positions, one instructional associate, and one occupational therapist position that we're currently hiring for. In the non-instructional realm, we see that we still are in need of bus drivers, and so we definitely know the challenges that that poses for our community, and we just encourage folks to continue to, you know, come on out, let us know that you're interested. We will provide you with all of the steps needed to, you know, drive a school bus or a van. We just encourage you to apply and, and let us know that you're interested. We have nineteen custodial positions that we're hiring for, for bus assistants, three maintenance warehouse positions that were the same, I do believe, as last update, as well as three office clerical positions. We mentioned the bus dispatchers and two cafeteria monitors. Continuing on for non-instructional vacancies for all of these positions, we're looking for one talented individual to fill a position of: operations specialist, a unified communication administrator, health services provider, a registered nurse, crossing guard, accounts payable procurement and, accounts payable and procurement coordinator in our finance department, a computer support technician, we did fill one of those positions since our last update, and a programmer analyst. These are some of our ongoing action steps that we share frequently. Two things that are, that are in the works, we are working on working with our colleges and universities to really begin to develop a pathway program, to work in tandem with what we know we're doing in our program of studies with students who are able to take that course. So we're really trying to have direct reach out, to be able to talk to some of the student teachers that are in our schools, and just working through that process with universities. As we know, they have certain regulatory requirements, and MOUs need to be developed, but that work is well underway. We're also very excited about two upcoming hiring events, and so the first one is in the distant, not-so-distant future, our job jamboree. We're looking forward to doing that again, February fifth, 2022, but sooner rather than later. We're excited about our support staff job fair on Wednesday, November third. So we will host, as we do in the northern end of our county, as well as in our, at our Grafton complex, and so we just invite folks to come out, learn about the York County School Division, shake our hands, and see why this is such a great place to work. I do believe that that concludes my staffing update, and I welcome any questions that you may have at this time.
I just have one. I know when people apply for positions, they apply online. When they apply online and create an application, does that application stay there so they can continue to just apply that to other jobs?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
And do they get a notification that it's went through, everything's good?
Yes, they should.
Okay.
They should get a notification. For anyone who does apply, who doesn't get a notification, just a quick call to us, and we can make sure that they do receive it. Sometimes Power School does have some wonkiness, I think, in this environment where everybody is using the platform. You know, lots of school divisions utilize that platform, so if they ever run into any issues, just give us a call. We can answer any question that they have.
Okay. Thank you.
For a lot of these non-licensed staff positions, how are we filling those gaps? Like, I'm thinking about nineteen custodians that were short. How are we filling that gap?
Well, if I may, I would like to defer to Dr. Carroll as the custodial staffing, custodial staff falls within his department. I definitely know that there are opportunities for overtime, there are coverage plans, but I would like for him to speak specifically so that I don't give you incorrect information.
Thank you.
Well, the short answer is, we don't get it all covered, but we do use a temp agency to help, you know, support that a little bit.
Does the temp agency help with other non-licensed staff positions, too, or are we just using that for custodial?
It's pretty much for that, yeah, I think that's the only reason we use it.
And are we using substitutes for our office and clerical staff?
Yes, we are.
Okay.
Yes, we are. There are substitute positions for those as well, for office and clerical staff.
Okay. And I know we have school-based subs, there's a certain number for each school. Are all of those positions filled, or are we still looking for school-based subs, someone that's stationed at the school and that can fill a gap?
We've made some movement on that, and I do know that recently that there was additional allocation made for building principals to be able to request additional subs, but we are still filling those. So no, all of them are not filled at this time, but we're making moves to do so.
Okay. Thank you.
You're very welcome.
In regards with the bus drivers, I'm not sure if we mentioned it, but I think there's a sign-on bonus, right, and a referral?
Yes.
Bonus as well? Okay, so if anyone out there listening, you missed it the eighteen-hundred other times we mentioned it, we do have some more incentives here to help out with our transportation department, because it's so important to get these kids to school safely and on time.
Yes, it is.
And so we're trying our hardest to be able to make that happen.
Yes, it is. Thank you, Chairman Higginbotham. We've had our first two, a bus driver and a bus driver assistant, finish the first portion of training, and so they received their first part of their bonus. And so after they complete training and are ready to go and in the seats every day that received the second, so thank you very much. Yes.
Great. Thank you.
Awesome.
Any other questions? All right. Thank you very much, Dr. Corbin-Staten.
Thank you very much for your support during these staffing challenges. We appreciate it, and we're working hard.
We know.
We appreciate it. Next on our agenda are comments from citizens and our public participation at the board meetings. Before I open up for public comment, I would like to share some remarks. We want to ensure that all staff members who are presenting tonight and those making comments can be heard and are allotted their full timeframe, so we ask everyone to be respectful and polite of everyone and allow them their three minutes to address the board. The school board provides public comment period for the public to comment on topics germane to the business of the school board, and we expect that each speaker will be courteous, modeling for our students how one can respectfully disagree with others' views. We ask that speakers address their comments to the entire school board and not one individual board member, superintendent, staff member, or audience. Speakers will present their comments from the podium, and you may remove your mask for us to be able to hear. There's, there's a three-minute time limit for each speaker, and a timer will be visible to the speakers from the podium, and speakers should conclude their remarks when the red light comes on. And we ask that you state your name and address, and then we'll start the timer for you. For COVID safety measures here, we provided individual signup sheets and pens for each speaker, and we ask that you may speak loudly, as the shield may muffle your voice. So I will now open up public participation for comments from citizens, and I will call the speakers up one at a time. Our first speaker this evening is Robert Ross.
Good evening, Chairman Higginbotham, members of the school board, as well as Dr. Shandor. Robert Ross, sixteen-eleven, First Colony Trace. At the twenty-four, at the August twenty-four school board meeting, Dr. Carroll, on the subject of CRT being taught, is quoted as saying, "We are not." While I agree with Dr. Carroll that CRT, as an academic discipline, is not taught, I disagree that the principles of this abhorrent theory may not have already injected its poison into our division. For example, last twenty, last May twenty-fourth, I came before this board and asked if each of you had read the Virginia Department of Education's Roadmap to Equity. I quoted avowed CRT anti-racist thought leaders cited in this roadmap. Furthermore, on page seven says that "we recognize that anti-racist education leaders are critical partners in our efforts to advance our broader equity priorities." Anti-racism, as defined and interpreted on page nine, would tell my daughters to acknowledge they have inherent racist beliefs and racist structures are pervasive in all aspects of their lives. It is utterly immoral, and I vehemently reject the CRT tenet in all its disgusting forms. The causes of disparities are complex, varied, and disputed, and it would be morally and ethically wrong and narrow-minded to attribute all to racism, as this roadmap does. As a counter viewpoint, I would highly recommend that each of you read Discrimination and Disparities by Thomas Sowell. Let me make this clear, and I would surmise that each of you would agree. I reject my daughters ever being taught to view society, cultural institutions, and our founding documents first as erudimitively racist and tainted by the original sin of slavery, and that their skin color will always be the first defining characteristics of their identity. However, sections of this roadmap lead me to that conclusion. I reject my daughters ever being taught to see themselves and others as defined by their racial identity and to focus on differences in skin color rather than their common humanity. However, other sections of this roadmap lead me to that conclusion. I reiterate, we cannot realize a clear vision of equal opportunity for all if our children are taught to see the world through the clouded and perverted lens of pessimism, grievance, and resentment, rather than clear optimism, gratitude, forgiveness, hard work, and advancement based on merit. I thank each and every one of you for your continued hard work, your advocacy for my daughters, for our community, and for our school division. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Lisa Legaspe.
Hi, my name's Lisa Legaspe, and my address is two-seven-one Princess Place in Williamsburg, northern end of the county. Dr. Shandor and members of the board, thank you for the opportunity to speak here this evening. You'll be happy to hear that I'm not here to discuss race or gender, although I do think these issues need to be addressed, and I thank that fellow parent of mine for doing so. Based on the most recent meeting of the school board and some other things that I've seen recently, there seems to be some tension between our two boards here in York County about how money, and one of the things is about how money is being spent. It's easy for the school board to defend spending. After all, it's for the children. But as a taxpayer, I would appreciate it if the school board demonstrated more prudence with our money, even when it comes to programs that sound great on the surface. Speaking of spending, though, does bring me to my topic. Does anyone know what this is? It's a mask. But it's not just any kind of mask. This mask was given to my sixth grader at Queens Lake by the school. I'm not exactly sure who paid for it, but that's how the spending comes in, because we're spending money on masks like this. Look at this mask. Isn't it lovely? It was given by the band teacher to my sixth grader so that when they get to band class, they can take off their regular mask that they've been wearing all day. Pick this one up from wherever they had it, pocket, backpack, I don't know, stick it on their face, and then proceed to play their instrument inside, because they've been playing outside heretofore. Then, when band class is over, they're going to take this mask off, put it back in their pocket or their backpack, pick up their other mask, but from wherever they had it, oh, in the mask cleaning machine that was available for them, I don't know, they're going to get it out of their backpack or their pocket, wherever it was, and put it back on and go about their day. I'm sorry. Does not anyone else find this funny? So, I'm sorry, I lost my train of thought there for a minute. I've been convinced for a while now that all of this masking is literally a charade. This, this proves it to me. And a thought, based on the hiring problems you're having, if you take away this mask mandates, I would get, I would bet you morale will improve, but, and the teachers will have less problems. But anyway, I believe that when the board voted to make mask-wearing universal in YCSD schools, they did not necessarily intend to make it a permanent decision. In fact, you said you would revisit the topic. But did you know that when CDC guidelines were changed on August 4th, verbiage giving the guidance to quote "safely transition learning environments out of COVID-19 precautions" unquote, end quote, for school administrators to decide to remove any of the preventative strategies, they should remove them one at a time. This verbiage was removed from CDC guidelines. What does this tell you? In the words of one watchdog who made this discovery, "There is no off-ramp for masking." If this board continues to follow CDC guidelines, there is not an end in sight. But here's the truth.
Thank you, Ms. Legaspe.
There's not an end in sight to COVID either.
Your time's up.
Even if we have vaccines.
Thank you, Ms. Legaspe. Your time is up.
COVID is not going away. There will be variants.
Ms. Legaspe, your time is up. I'm asking you politely to stop.
Okay. If anybody here wants to read the last statement, any other parent here to do that?
Ms. Legaspe, I'm a band director myself. If you'd like to talk about the band masks after the meeting, I'd be happy to speak with you about those.
My pleasure.
Our next speaker is Carol Bauer.
Good evening, Mr. Higginbotham, members of the school board. My name is Carol Bauer. I'm a proud member of the YE. I reside at 314 Brooklyn. First, before I get started, I just really want to say thank you. Thank you for all of the things that you've done and your support of all our students and staff. It's not been an easy time event. I certainly appreciate everything that you guys have done. I do want to talk to you about a serious topic, though. I come before you to talk about suicide. Suicide is a tragedy, but it's a highly preventable tragedy. The lives lost impact not only the immediate family, but also the entire community. Among youth, it extracts an enormous toll due to the significant years of potential life loss and then emotional scars. In the year 2019, suicide was the second-leading cause of death among 10 to 24-year-olds. Youth suicide is preventable. Prevention efforts can happen and should happen at all levels of influence, individual, relationship, community, and societal. According to the American Health Ranking and Health Foundation site, suicide rates for at-risk youth can be substantially reduced by knowing the signs. Four out of five suicide deaths are preceded by warning signs such as suicidal threats, previous suicide attempts, preoccupation or obsession with death, depression, and final arrangements, making it more difficult to die in an act of deliberate self-harm, and improving access to mental health resources. Examples include medication interventions, support groups, effective clinical care for medical, mental disorders, family and community support. Having the resources in our schools is both critical and necessary. These past two years have created stresses for our students and families. We must be aware of the stresses and help our students develop the tools needed to cope and be successful. Learning how to support students is a win for our students, a service for our families, and an economic boost to York County. I cannot imagine why anyone would not emotionally support any of our students as they develop into successful community members. The societal and emotional well-being of all our children should not be a political or diverse, you know, one of those bad things, arguing issue. Thank you to the support provided by YCSD administration in offering training for the hundreds of YCSD educators, coaches, and staff who support our students and provide them with the tools to help our students. Thank you to the community who's continually here to support not only our students, but the teachers and staff. And as we saw tonight from the SOA students, what an amazing students we do have. Of course, when we do talk of student mental health and our students, we can't forget the mental health of the staff that supports our students. As I've shared previously at school board meetings and in conversations before, please consider offering COVID leave for our staff. I appreciate the adjusting to the calendar. Mrs. Ford, I'm with you. I think it should be seven days. We'll go for that amendment a little bit later. And I think we'll also hear about adjusting the pay plan. So thank you very much for the efforts that you have made and hope you'll continue to do that and support our staff. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our fourth and last speaker signed up for today is Samuel Urie Jr.
Good evening, Dr. Shandor, school board chair, Mr. Higginbotham, members of the school board. My name is Sam Urie. I live at 302 Penworth Crossing. I'm going to talk to you today about three areas of concern tonight: safety, transparency, and security. Questions that must stay paramount in the policymakers and citizens of the current county are what things we can do to maintain the safety and what is the potential cost of not showing that you value your teachers and staff. When it comes to safety, are you properly consistently implementing the required recommended mitigating strategies? Are the schools being properly maintained with the shortage of custodians? At one time, I had surveyed the custodians and I'd also analyzed approximately how many square feet of area each custodian was responsible for on average. Of course, this was prior to the pandemic. The number also assumes no shortages due to sickness, injury, or family emergency. To further potentially erode the level of safety, we've already heard about the bus drivers, instructional assistants, special ed paras, the teachers that are just short. But the bottom line is, what is the impact on our students? We're only at the beginning of the school year and the level of fatigue and feeling of being overwhelmed is having a social and emotional impact on the teachers and educators in general. Some locals are having self-care seminars, others actively implementing strategies. I'm happy to hear that you all have in those same discussions. Let me shift the gears to transparency. First of all, the school division's administrative team needs to demonstrate what I call transparency. Ultimately, the school board is responsible for transparency or the lack of it. Bringing new teachers in at a proper step based on teaching experience using the discount is not right. The teachers that have the most experience in the county have already demonstrated their loyalty and are being punished for their continuous service of the county. I may be off, but I believe that they are three, four, five steps behind based on years of teaching. So if they transfer out, regain their steps, and then come back, they will receive their steps. It's never too late to do the right thing. Your reputation for the treatment of your employees is an extremely important thing. The last topic, security, ties in with the first one, which was safety, but in a different way. York County School Division does not have its own security personnel separate from the human resource officers, HROs, and some places call school resource officers, SROs, provided by the sheriff department. Other school divisions around us have them, as well as 75% or higher of the top 20 school divisions in the state. People transferring in are shocked that the high school and middle schools do not have school security officers. We're not an island. Students and teachers and administrators move back and forth between school divisions. We don't want to learn about this the hard way. Isn't having more trained people better than less? How about that assistance that would be essential with the additional eyes and ears for the administrative teams? Thank you for your consideration on listening to these issues.
Thank you very much. That concludes the speakers who signed up. Is there anyone else here who wishes to speak? Okay. I now close the public participation for comments of citizens. We'll move on to matters by board members. Mr. Mait, would you like to begin?
Yeah, absolutely. As you all know, it's October is the month, National Principals Month. So I thought, because we are in unprecedented, such challenging times, that I would acknowledge our principals across District 5. Chrissy Wagner at Bethel Manor and Mary Lugo at TAB Elementary, as well as Paul Russ at TAB High and Heather Young at TAB Middle and Kelly Denny at Mount Vernon. We greatly appreciate your dedication and commitment and the well-being and success of our students. So I thought I would do that and I had an opportunity to visit with a couple of principals this afternoon. Quickly, unfortunately, we have to say goodbye to one of our longtime partners and key members of our extended team. Since July of 2013, we've been fortunate to have Michelle Knotts as the general manager and operations for Sedexo Nutrition Services. And during that time, she has worked closely with YCSD Food Services to provide our students and staff access to nutritious meals. Michelle has incorporated numerous innovative changes to our daily operations resulting in meal consumption increases for both breakfast and at lunch levels. As you may know, for meal distribution specifically, there are over 1.5 meals were served from March 2020 to August of '21 this year. So congratulations are also in order for Michelle. She's been selected to be a resident district manager for Sedexo and she'll work out of Charleston, South Carolina. So again, she's been a key partner and we wanted to acknowledge her and her promotion. As a school board member, we obviously get an opportunity to visit our schools. Over the last several weeks, I've visited several schools to include TAB High and TAB Middle. And when visiting, I always make it a point to stop in and visit with our school nurses, get a little insight on best practices, how we're reinforcing our nurses on those bumps on Monday as well as Friday. So I'm always gaining some insights there, particularly with regard to contact tracing and how we stand in the schools with regard to transmission. Also had the opportunity to experience firsthand a couple of key capital improvements, and those were at TAB Middle, the main and auxiliary gym, which has been presented with regard to the new flooring, paint scheme, lighting. Kids, obviously, working through PE in both gyms. And then visited in a number of different classrooms and some new teachers at TAB High School. Get a little bit of insight on their onboarding and their welcoming and support, and they all feel very supportive and very pleased to be part of the profession and part of the team. And then also had an outdoor Spanish class, which was rather innovative, where they combined language with a little bit of wellness and deep breathing and other exercises, as I said, outside. So it was innovative and the weather was beautiful and I could tell that the students were enjoying it greatly. There was mention a little bit earlier in public comments about health, safety, and security for students, teachers, and staff, and obviously, that is the division's foremost priority. As a result, the division's staff and school leadership team conducts training and exercise incident response plans with the goal of increasing preparedness. And I had the opportunity to observe training conducted by the York-Pococen Sheriff's Office and attended by approximately 20 of our leaders from across nearly every functional area in the division. This training was conducted last week by the Sheriff's, the Community Affairs Division, New York-Pococen Sheriff's Office. And this was the first of three modules, which will end in a tabletop exercise. The training was excellent and what came through to me was how experienced and seasoned our professional team is. Many had experienced some of the incidents that were at hand through scenario. And again, I was very, very impressed with the training and again, experienced, and the experience from the team. Excuse me. Finally, real quickly, one last comment as it pertains to the draft parental rights document that's circulating on social media and mentioned in print this morning. I can't begin to tell you how disappointing I was, or how disappointing it was for me personally to pull open the Daily Press and on the front page headline, "See That York County May Deny School Funding." Nothing shocks me anymore, but I was certainly very surprised, and forgive me. So I'd offered to the citizens of the county, and particularly this board, is having read that and having looked at the draft proposal, got to stand firm, and we've got the demand from our elected officials, particularly our select supervisors, that we resist the temptation or compulsion to politicize our community schools and use them as tools to push forth partisan agendas. None of us, I don't believe, is naive to think that we can insulate our schools from divisive politics, but harmful rhetoric, cynicism creates divisions and erodes civic trust, fostering disrespect, and ultimately, creating long-term harmful impacts such as delegitimizing the school board and school division leadership. Fortunately, the school board remains steadfast in our commitment to work together in open and productive ways to resolve issues and matters as they pertain to our schools.
Thank you, Mr. Mait. Ms. Carles?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Higginbotham. Before I share how I've been engaging in our school community, I want to address the same elephant in the room. The Board of Supervisors, they put forth a resolution about parental rights and they cited parents' right to make decisions concerning the upbringing, education, and care of the parent's child. And while I 100% agree with these parental rights, I take extreme offense to the resolution. The resolution was posted to social media and on Mr. Zerima's law firm before it was even sent to this board for consideration. They have called it a joint resolution and there was no conversation, no collaboration, and absolutely no consideration of the consequences it would bring. This resolution is political and divisive and it's not based in fact. We do not teach critical race theory, and I encourage anyone who supports the resolution to do some realistic research. Don't rely on social media or media of any kind for your data. Reach out to your local school, your school board member, your superintendent, and get actual facts. The writer of the resolution isn't even using the correct verbiage for the things he says he's concerned about. Culturally responsive teaching refers to teachers knowing their students so they can best meet their needs. Cultural competency training is the state mandated training. I personally completed the training because I wanted to know what it was like, and there was absolutely nothing offensive about it. When I asked supporters of the resolution what parental rights are being threatened, no one could give me a direct answer, and that's very concerning to me. Parental rights and engagement are paramount in York County, and York County School Division has a reputation for having amazing partnership with families. Our success is rooted in the fact that teachers, students, and families work together. And as a parent who's raised kids in the school division, I have always felt included and that I could be involved at any level that I wanted. If I had questions, our teachers and principals were able to answer them. I was able to sit on many committees and my opinion was not only respected, but I really feel it was heard. We have intentionally set it up so that parents are an integral part of our decision-making process, and I think that's something we should really be proud of. So, parents and families, we want you involved, we need you involved, and so do our students. Some people are so focused on trying to find something wrong that they're actually casting shadows on all that's right. Our teachers and staff are working their tails off in extraordinary circumstances. Our students are dealing with the effects of this pandemic and the loss of so many things that were important to them. Instead of fighting an invisible foe, I want everyone to ask how you can help. And it could be as simple as signing up to help at your Fall Festival at the kid's school. It could be as simple as buying fruit from a band member so that they can go to a competition. It could be as simple as stepping up to be a board member, like we heard so many times tonight, and really just taking these kids as an example. We heard of all the amazing things they're doing in the community, and that's what I really want to push people to do, is just ask how you can help before getting on social media and going on a rant or putting non-factual information out there. Another thing we can do is just send a kind email to your teacher, your child's teacher, or send a handwritten note to a bus driver. Kindness really, really matters and it's going to go a long way. I know that some of the emails I receive, I have to balance it with going out into the community and either doing something kind or having someone be kind to me. So I would encourage that. With that said, I'm always willing to work in partnership with our counterparts on the county side. All our citizens deserve that and deserve to have elected officials who are willing to work together. But nothing about this entire situation has been productive, and in fact, it's been damaging and hurtful to those who are working so hard in our division. This bullying behavior is less than New York County citizens deserve, and it's certainly less than our wonderful staff and amazing students deserve. I'd let my counterpart Chad Green know how I feel about the resolution, and I hope that we can find a way to work together collaboratively in the future. Now, it's been a busy month. I just wanted to share what I've been doing out in the community. I got to participate in a PTA meeting at York Elementary, which is really great. They had, I think, 66 parents and staff members on. Great conversation, great questions. I was able to participate in a New York County Council PTA meeting, and at the beginning of the year, they do their meet your administrators meeting, and the room was absolutely filled. Thank you so much for having so many people there to explain what they do, put a face with a name. I think now more than ever, that's important so that people know who they can reach out to get actual answers. Got to visit the Walkathon at Seaford Elementary School, and I think I've shared this before. I actually got choked up walking up because I saw so many parent volunteers, and I thought, oh my gosh, this is so normal. And I actually heard a parent say, "I'm just so happy you want me," because we've had so long with not being able to have volunteers participate. So that was really, really refreshing. Ms. Sheffield gave me a tour of York Ritter Academy and was just, as a new principal there, was so excited to tell us all the things that she's been doing, that her students are doing, and just the genuine dedication that she has to that building and that program. I'm just so excited to see where that's going to go. Participated in the mock interviews at York High School for two different days last week. My husband actually took a day off work and he did mock interviews the entire day. So we have so many people that are dedicated. The kids were great, great conversation, great questions. I know I had a lot of laughs that day based on the things they were telling me that they want to do in their future. And then Ms. Nagle gave me an amazing tour of Seaford Elementary so that she was able to showcase all the work that her staff is doing and that her students are doing. Tomorrow night, we get to see the showcase of the bands at Bailey Field. I'm very excited about that. My nephew will be participating, so I can't wait to see that. And then actually, I get interviewed on Wednesday by a student at York Middle who is doing a project about citizenship and how issues affect kids in schools. So I'm very excited about that. Just even honored to be asked to be interviewed. So again, just a busy month, so glad to be out there and just seeing everything that our kids and our teachers are doing. So, thank you.[1793.33]
Thank you. Mr. Schaefer?
Thank you. I'm going to be pretty short and sweet as far as my response to the resolution, because I think that both Mr. Myatt and Ms. Garals covered a lot of it. I will say that the current resolution that I think that is circulating now is, I think, the third revision, is it? Yeah. And totally different than the first one that they passed or put on for consideration, I think, for their November 16th meeting. But we weren't contacted for input at all. I've had two conversations in the past with Mr. Zerimba that brought this up months ago, as a matter of fact. And we went through everything, and I told him and refuted all the CRT stuff and all that he was bringing up that we weren't doing. And even went through what social and emotional learning was for him. And I don't know why he has forgotten those conversations during his time writing these resolutions and all. But I, quite frankly, feel that it's just political posturing by the Board of Supervisors, and I'm very disappointed and hurt by Mr. Zerimba, by Mr. Green and Mr. Roan. I don't think that if they had spoken to us at all, that they would know better. And if they would step into a school, I'd be glad to take them around my district and show them exactly what's going on in the schools. It's not a problem. Anything that's ever brought to our attention, we address. We have had some outliers, but, like I said, they were addressed and taken care of, and they aren't an issue any longer. It's just sad to see that the Board of Supervisors, without even talking to us first, would go through these kind of hoops that they're jumping through to, I don't know if they're trying to make themselves look better or what, but I don't appreciate it. Now, on to October. Yes, it was a very good month. I got the chance to go out to my schools, went to Queens Lake Middle School, and had a wonderful time there. Spent a half day there just talking to people, and it was just, it was great. Between the students, the teachers, the principals, it was an awesome time. And I also went over to Waller Mill Elementary School with Catherine Goff, and we were there for the Virginia Lottery Award. One of the winners was a fourth-grade teacher, first-year teacher, Amy Payne, and she got all kinds of stuff from the Virginia Lottery, and this was from items that were submitted to the lottery of why this teacher deserves this stuff. And as it turns out, it was her mother's essay that won, which was pretty neat, I thought. And the Virginia Lottery came to the school. They set up right in the front yard there, and we had all the teachers, all the Paris Cafeterias, everyone came out and got to play the games and get rewarded and everything, and it was just a great time. And then Amy especially, in fact, I haven't heard when that was supposed to air. On WTKR, it was filmed for Channel 3, and it was on? Okay. They were supposed to tell me. I didn't know about it. And it was just great to see the recognition of a first-year teacher and all the neat stuff that went with it. And so I thank the Virginia Lottery for doing that. Now, one more plug for the School of the Arts at Bruton High School. I will tell you that, as I said, I went on Saturday and saw two one-act plays there, and it was a great time. Everything that I've ever seen there has been quality, first-rate productions. And I would tell you that live theater is back at Bruton. We had, one of the one-act plays was done on the screen, but the other one was done in person, on the stage. And it was just so neat to see the kids being able to do plays again. And the School of the Arts does an excellent job. I mean, I've known the teachers there, oh, gosh, forever. I mean, Renee Kingin's been there. We were discussing, I think I've been at Bruton one more year than she has. So she's been around about, like, 19. Carrie DiFiore, another one of the wonderful teachers there, was at Waller Mill for a long time and then went over. So they have an excellent staff. Ms. Maney has just done a fantastic job over there, and the plays that they do are excellent productions. And the kids are great, from all over the county. So I would enjoy you to go see a play, support the School of the Arts, because it is definitely worthwhile. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Schaefer. And Mr. Richardson?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd just like to dito all the comments before about the resolution. People moved to York County for our schools. I want them to continue to move to York County for our schools. That's why I got on the school board, and that was one of my things that I started out with, that I wanted to continue that. I agree with parental rights. Our parents have the right to top their children out of various topics that may be discussed in the division. It's never been an issue. We're open, we're transparent. We have committees that we have that parents are involved in. So I'm not really sure where a lot of misinformation is still coming from, but I've already spoken about that in Mr. Zerimba and his misinformation at our last meeting. This is not a joint resolution. This is a one-sided resolution. I've never been contacted, and it really wouldn't be me to be contacted. It should be somebody contacting the board chair, I would assume, and setting up some meeting dates, and so he can meet with each one of us individually and then go to that meeting and come up with a joint resolution, but that's not happened, and there's no intention. I don't think of that happening. But in any event, it's just one-sided at this point, but that's all I'm going to speak about that tonight. I was able to visit a few schools earlier this month with Dr. Shandor in Grafton and in Dare, and then we had our WHRO meeting that we did virtually and met for that in the afternoon. So it was kind of a full day for us to do that. But thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. On October 5th, there was a resolution presented at the Board of Supervisors meeting, and it was accepted by the chair, and then discussed that it would be a great resolution to be passed jointly. At that point, we had not heard anything prior to that meeting. I received an email the next day, providing me a copy of the accepted resolution that covered topics such as the 1619 Project, critical race theory, and student pronoun selection. Two days later, I responded to Chairman Green on behalf of the school board. In this communication, I noted that the school board would want to have a collaborative approach to a joint resolution between the two boards, and we sought to move forward in a collaborative manner. I reminded him that both boards are autonomous entities, invested with their own powers, and neither should attempt to force, coerce, or dictate the others' actions. Within this communication, I also asked for clarification on the appointment of a member to the Planning Commission, who is not a York County citizen or York County voter and not a U.S. citizen at the time. And I had asked a second time in another email, and I have received zero response back. On the 11th of October, Mr. Green emailed me back and shared that he was open to collaboration as well. And then four days later, on the 15th, we became aware of social media posts that included a, quote, "final draft of the resolution." On the 18th is when I received a copy from Chairman Green that was titled "Mr. Zerimba's amended resolution." This was not an amended resolution. It was a brand-new resolution, and the document had just been rewritten completely from the original resolution. And at this time, I'm not sure which copy of the resolution will come in front of the Board of Supervisors at their meeting on November 16th. So in no way has this been a collaborative or joint effort from the beginning. To my knowledge, this is not even a fully supported Board of Supervisors resolution. It is Mr. Zerimba's resolution that Chairman Green has simply accepted. In this resolution, it says that teachers are indoctrinating students, which, to me, is ridiculous. As a teacher, if I had the ability to indoctrinate students, I would have no behavior issues in my classroom. They would meet behavior expectations every time. Students would always be working hard, and they would turn in all of their work on time. If I had the ability to indoctrinate students, it would be for that. This resolution not only misrepresents state code, but it misquotes the school division's mission statement multiple times. It accuses YCSD of wrongdoing with zero evidence. That is, by definition, defamation, which is something that I would expect a lawyer to know and understand. The idea that the Board of Supervisors would threaten to withhold funding from the York County School Division and use it as a leash to attempt to control us and move us around as they wish is inappropriate and disgraceful. It states that they have received numerous complaints from county, from citizens about critical race theory and other things that they have said. And I've received two email forwards from Ms. Noel, my counterpart, and we've had multiple conversations back and forth. I've received two emails from that. And are we to believe that the majority of the 60,000 York County residents have reached out to the Board of Supervisors, or is the author of this resolution simply pandering to a small group of community members? It seems as if the author of this resolution is out of touch with the majority of his constituents. It's a shame that our local school board and Board of Supervisors are being drawn into state and national-level politics that are seeking to divide and destroy instead of working together for the benefit of all. And to me, one of the most irritating things with this whole process is that it is alienating the hard-working teachers and staff in York County to hear the accusations of this going on and to know what's going on in the classroom and how hard these teachers have worked over the last 18 months. And they were called heroes 18 months ago, and now they're being called, or we're being told we're indoctrinating students, that we don't have their best interests at heart. Get in the classroom. Ask to visit. Don't accuse. See what's going on. Learn, and then accept what is happening, and admit if you make a mistake. There is nothing wrong with admitting that you made a mistake. You learned more information, and your thought process has changed. I'm going to take a breath here for a second. Completely unrelated, I had the opportunity to attend the GEAC meeting this week, and it was wonderful to see a group of parents come together in a joint effort and to collaborate with one another, to talk about what they can do to help the gifted education teachers in the program here in York County, and to discuss what they've heard and what they've seen, and provide some ideas for things that can even happen in the future. It was nice to see that and to participate in. And I just want to give a shout out to all the members on GEAC for that. And I also would like to give a shout out to all the high school bands and their directors. All four were at the Gloucester High School Band Competition this past weekend, Grafton, York, TAB, and Bruton. I was unable to go Saturday evening, but I heard that they all had wonderful performances, and I'm looking forward to their performances coming up this week at the expo. I hope that everybody has a wonderful last week of August and coming, oh, August, goodness gracious, October, and going into November. Everyone's able to be thankful for all that they have, to hold their loved ones close, enjoy the time that we have coming up with Thanksgiving, Christmas, Hanukkah, any of the holidays that you and your family may observe, and that you enjoy that time together. And I think I'm just going to end my comments right there. Thank you. Now, we'll move on to financial matters. Mr. Schaefer, I'll turn it over to you.
Now, we're at the exciting part of the meeting. Consideration of the approval of claims certified for payment. The significant expenditures for September. Payments were made to instruction totaling $616,140. The vast majority of that went to New Horizons, which was $334,500 for tuition for governor, school, and career and tech ed. Then, next came Gateway Education and $154,900 for biology textbooks. And then we had a lot of smaller ones then. Payments related to IT totaled $1,054,700 and included payments to VirtuCom, which was $305,500 for warranty service on personal devices. Kronos, which was $72,300 for our annual renewal of the time management system, and Mid-Atlantic, $47,700 for fire and security inspection services. Payments for operations and maintenance totaled $122,150 and included payments to Virginia Power for $77,300 for utility services. And that was a big one there. Let's see. Payments related to food service totaled $275,100 and included payments to Sadexo, which was $255,800 for food service operations, and Tyson Foods for USDA food supplies, which was $19,000. Payments related to transportation totaled $69,200 and included payments to RK Chevrolet, which was $45,600 for a replacement pickup truck for the maintenance department. And then Motorola radios was $23,600. Payments related to construction and maintenance totaled $1,204,900, which was, the vast majority went to Carpentry and Painting Experts, $440,700 for the work at Bruton High Learning Commons, which is set to open November 9th, by the way, and it's going to be awesome. Simpson Unlimited, $712,900 for partial roof replacement and coating at York High. Let's see. Significant changes to the operating budget for September revenues was sales tax revenue for fiscal year '22 increased by more than $279,000 when compared to last year due to expected economic growth. Federal revenue for September increased $211,000, which, when compared to last year, because of unexpected payment for impact aid. Expenditures for instruction have increased by $5.6 million in September 2021 when compared to September 2020. This was a result of scheduled pay increase for fiscal year '22 and a result of moving 10-month employee pay schedule up one month earlier in the fiscal year '22. Expenditure for transportation operations and administration and health increased $1.1 million, primarily as a result of scheduled pay increase for fiscal year '22. Technology expenditures for September have decreased by more than a million from last year as a result of the one-to-one program implemented last year. Significant changes for the food service budget was federal food service revenue for September has increased by more than $178,000 due to increased student participation, and food service expenditures for September '21 have increased $96,000 when compared to September 20 due to increased student participation. Consideration for Resolution 2143, a resolution authorizing for specific procurement. Resolution 21-43 requires board's approval authorizing procurements of more than $50,000. There's three items on the resolution. IT Systems Review, with a vendor to be determined, was for $100,340. Tyson Foods was $51,000 for an increase in a contract, and Sands Anderson for a $20,000 increase in contract. Mr. Chairman, I now move to approve financial matters as listed.
Is there a second?
Second.
Are there any questions before we vote? Okay, Ms. Ford, we have a motion and a second?
Yes, a motion was made by Mr. Schaefer and seconded by Mrs. Garals to approve financial matters as listed. Board members, you may cast your vote. Mrs. Garals?
I'm working on it. There we go.
Okay, the motion passed five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ford. Next is our consent calendar. On our consent calendar, we've all had a chance to review it. Over the last few days, we have approval of personnel actions, approval of minutes from our regular meeting on September 27th, and a work session and special meeting on October 11th, approval of donations in the amount of $100, and approval of the overnight field trips and student activities for the period of November 1st, 2021, through February 1st, 2022. Are there any questions about anything on the consent calendar, or do we need anything removed?
Mr. Chair, I move that we approve the consent calendar as listed.
Is there a second?
Second.
Ms. Ford, we have a motion and a second to approve our consent calendar. You may poll the board.
Yes, the motion was made by Mr. Richardson and seconded by Mr. Myatt to approve the consent calendar as listed. Board members, you may cast your vote. The motion passed five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you very much. We do have two action items on our agenda. Our first action item is approval of a proclamation for American Education Week, which is November 15th through 19th. Dr. Shandor?
Thank you, Mr. Higginbotham. The annual observance of American Education Week dates back to 1921. It was established for the purpose of informing the public of accomplishments and needs of the public schools and to secure the cooperation and support of the public in meeting those needs. American Education Week is a reminder that all children deserve a high-quality education, and that each and every employee of the school division, be they teachers, administrators, custodians, bus drivers, or office staff, play an integral role in supporting and equipping students every day. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we need a motion and a second to approve the proclamation for American Education Week.
I move we approve the proclamation for American Education Week.
I'll second.
Ms. Ford, we have a motion and a second?
A motion was made by Mrs. Garals and seconded by Mr. Schaefer to approve the resolution for American Education Week. for American Education Week. Board members, you may cast your vote. The motion passed five to zero. Thank you.
Next is an approval of updates to the 2021-22 Pay Plan. Dr. Shandor.
Thank you, Mr. Higginbotham. Dr. Vladu, our Chief Human Resource Officer, is going to share a few remarks related to these updates. Dr. Vladu?
Thank you, Dr. Shandor. We're going to wait for the screen PowerPoint to come up. Chairman Higginbotham, members of the board, and Dr. Shandor. Tonight I'll provide an update to the FY '22 Pay Plan. This presentation will provide you with some new requests and summarize the changes to the pay plan that will take effect December 1, 2021. I would like to begin by bringing up several new requests for consideration as part of your vote tonight. First, to respond to increased requirements for the Virginia Preschool Initiative, we are proposing the addition of 1.0 FTE, or One Coordinator Student Services. This position is graded at 28, which is with all the other coordinators and similar positions. Second, we're proposing to increase the behavior support, communication support, and multiple disability teacher supplements. So these are teachers serving specifically in this program. Currently, they're being paid as a supplement of $1,885, and we're proposing to increase that to $2,200. Third, as I shared and responded, or I will share responding to staffing shortages in these classrooms, we're proposing to increase the pair educator supplements in these programs. Many of the staff members are involved in tooth-feeding, changing, assistive technology, and they're doing very, very important work for the division. We did a comparison with other school divisions in the region, so this is appropriate and a much-needed request. Fourth, we're proposing to increase the extensive personal care supplement from $700 to $750. Next, based on recommendation from the Chief Operations Officer, Dr. Carroll, we are proposing the addition of school-based transportation liaison. This position will be responsible for coordination and communication or transportation logistics. As you well know, there's a lot of work that needs to be done to coordinate buses each and every day at each specific site, and these would be staff that would know that school, know the logistics, know the layout, that would coordinate with transportation, meet the drivers out there, and ensure that we expedite and improve those links between transportation and our schools. So we're proposing this supplement to be at $1,200 per year. Last, we're also proposing the addition of a $250 bonus for any coach with a CDL. As you can imagine, when coaches drive to various locations, that is one bus driver that will have, additional bus driver that will have, particularly at dismissal time. So this is an important addition, and $250 is proposed for any coach that has a CDL or is willing to undergo our training program and get the CDL. This is the first of two slides that summarize the updates to the pay plan. First, as you'll remember, back in May, the school board approved an average of 5% increase to compensation for fiscal year 2021. On July 1, our employees received a 3% cost-of-living allowance to compensation, and the remainder of that, or 2%, takes effect on December 1, 2021, which is coming right up. As such, effective December 1, all employees hired before June will receive a one-step increase, and the remainder of that 2% for a total of 2% is a cost-of-living allowance that, to make up for that 2% increase in pay. This information is found on page 4 of the pay plan, but throughout, because it affects just about every position from pages 12 to 48, you'll find that information. Second, as you'll remember, the school board approved the regrading of school health professionals with a RN degree. Tonight, you receive a request for LPN to increase that proportionally from grade 14 to grade 16. Third, on page 60, you will find a supplement increase for teachers and pair educators in the classes I described on the previous slide. Fourth, also on page 60, you'll find the additional pair educator extensive personal care supplements. And lastly, as I share on page 60, you'll find the CDL bonus proposal for coaches. Now to some other changes. I would like to summarize, because we are reorganizing the warehouse department based on recommendations from Mr. Doleck. So first, the distribution technician, warehouse helper, and warehouse person are reorganized into one position, which is retitled warehouse material handler. Lastly, the network technician title has not been used in quite a while, and we're removing it from the document. Thank you for the opportunity to share these proposed changes for your vote tonight. This concludes the updates to the pay plan for FY '22.
Are there any questions?
That transportation liaison, is that an existing staff member that would add that to their duties? So it would be an office staff member, or admin, or a classroom teacher?
It could be both. So it could be a teacher with the additionist type in, or it could be a nonlicensed person. Certainly, we have to pay attention to the Fair Labor Standards Act and work around that, but we would want to compensate those individuals that are willing to take that important position.
Okay. And then as far as the coaches, do we have a lot of the, I mean, how many are choosing to get the CDL or already have the CDL?
It's not a large number. What we want is to recruit more, because every single one, even if, you know, one more than we have right now, it's a, you know, a good thing. So we are advertising that. Dr. Hartley, who works with our ADs, is working on recruiting some folks to undergo that program, and we're going to, again, aim to get as many as possible, but even one would be an improvement over what we currently do.
Oh, great. Thank you.
Just to clarify, the, the compensation increase on December 1st, employees who are hired after June 1st only receive the market adjustment, not the step increase, correct?
Yes, that's a great consideration, because the employees we hired already have been placed on the step, you know, this year for this fiscal year. So therefore, any employee hired bef, before June 1 gets the step, but after June 1, they already, you know, they have been, without just a few months, therefore, they do, they're not eligible for that step increase.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification. Any further questions? Okay, then we are in need of a motion and a second to approve the updates to the 21-22 Pay Plan.
I move that we approve the updates of the 21-22 Pay Plan.
I have a second. Ms. Ford, we have a motion and a second.
Yes, the motion was made by Mrs. Garalt and seconded by Mr. Richardson to approve the 2021-22 Pay Plan. Board members, you may cast your vote. The motion passed five to zero. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to our next portion in our agenda, we have a policy discussion for consideration of Policy BCF, the Advisory Committees to the School Board. Dr. Shandor.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Higginbotham. Deputy County Attorney, Ms. Melanie Berry, is going to share some information related to this policy. Ms. Berry?
Mr. Higginbotham, members of the board, Dr. Shandor, tonight before you, for discussion is Policy BCF, Advisory Committees to the School Board. The substantive change to this policy is providing the board the option of appointing committee members to one, two, or three-year terms rather than the one-year term that previously was in the policy. So this gives you more flexibility and allows you to stagger the terms. It's being recommended to be scheduled for second reading, and I'll be happy to answer any questions.
Questions?
Very clear.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Berry.
Next, for policy first reading, our first reading is of Section C for General School Administration of the York County School Board Policy Manual. Dr. Shandor.
Thank you, Mr. Higginbotham. There were a few minor changes. Dr. Carroll is going to review those with the board.
Thank you, Dr. Shandor. Yes, I have four edits to, or edits to four of the policies that we presented to you under discussion at the last meeting. You'll find those changes, suggested changes, in your board brief, and they've also been already reflected in the red-line version. As I said, they're all small. First is Policy CBA. Staff recommends changing the title of Board Chairman to Chair in the first paragraph under major duties. I got a look there. So Policy CF, we have some grammatical changes that eliminate references to the superintendent as a male only. For example, one says just his, and that doesn't allow for a female superintendent. This, so this now qualifies as a revision. Policy CX, there's a change in the middle school hours to actually reflect our true office hours. That was a change made a few years ago. So middle schools will be reflected as 7:30 to 4:00 p.m. as they are, as they currently exist right now. So that is a revision. And then the last one is Policy CBD. We added an additional legal reference. Since there was no change to the policy itself, this will remain a restatement.
Any questions? All right, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Carroll.
Our next reading for policy is the first reading of revisions to Policy JJAC, Student-Athlete Concussions During Extracurricular Activities. Dr. Shandor.
Thank you, Mr. Higginbotham. There's been no changes to this policy since last month.
Okay. Any questions? Okay. Next one is first reading of new policy filed JJAD, sudden cardiac arrest in student athletes. Dr. Shandor.
Again, Dr. Uh...
I'll take it.
Doctor, Mr. Higginbotham. There have been no changes to this policy since last month.
Okay, thank you. Any questions? Okay. For a second reading, we don't have anything for this meeting, so that'll take us to the report of the superintendent. Dr. Shandor.
Thank you, Mr. Higginbotham. Just a couple highlights this evening. Over the past several weeks, I've had the opportunity to visit schools and classrooms, as many board members shared this evening, and I certainly enjoyed those visits as well. I think the best part of my day is when I'm in classrooms or in schools, watching that relationship and connection between our students and our teachers, which is just, just fantastic to see. So I'm super proud of all of our teachers, our families, and our students for all of their hard work and their flexibility thus far. I did want to make sure that I mentioned October 2nd was National Custodian Recognition Day. I want to thank all of our amazing custodians that take care of our schools, performing all of their duties. We certainly appreciate everything that they do. They provide our students and staff with a clean and safe environment, and they help in many other ways that are behind the scenes. So we appreciate this dedicated group of employees. As I think Ms. Garalt mentioned, a number of our staff members who were in the room attended the PTA Meet the Administrators Night. That meeting, I guess that was two weeks ago, I think. Just an opportunity for our leadership team to introduce ourselves to all of our parents and who were wonderful partners of ours in the school division, and I think it was a really, the way we did it this year was we had staff members share just a little bit about them personally, about where they've been, what they've done, et cetera, and about their, their personal life, you know, so that these parents can see them as people, because so many times you have parents and folks in the community look at our names and our titles or email addresses as just some stranger that lives, you know, downtown somewhere, and we're not. We work very hard. Our team members are very dedicated people. Many of them, as I look in the room, have students, their own children who've gone through our school system. So I think that was very important, and I think it was a really good meeting with those folks. We got a lot of good questions. We had a lot of good laughs during that evening. On Tuesday, October 5th, parents received notification to complete the federal Impact Aid survey cards. This is an annual survey that helps determine the amount of federal Impact Aid funds the school division receives for our students whose parents or guardians are connected to the federal government, whether they're in the armed forces, civil servant, or a civilian contractor working on federal property. YCSD receives about $8.7 million annually as a direct result of the survey. This is not a YCSD requirement. This is a federal requirement. These funds are critical to the YCSD budget, as they represent 60% of federal funds we receive. In addition, these funds help to minimize the tax of the local government. Board members, you may recall that last year, the survey was not required. The federal government allowed school divisions to use survey data from the prior year due to the pandemic. This year, the survey is conducted online using RICOR. Most of our families are familiar with RICOR, and they used this system to sign the student handbook and IT authorization forms. As of Friday, approximately 5,500 surveys have been completed, which represents, represents about 44%. So this evening, I'm asking all parents to please take a few minutes and complete this important survey. This concludes the superintendent's remarks. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Shandor. Our next work session will be held on Monday, November 8th downstairs here at York Hall. We are in need of two closed sessions this evening. Could a board member please make a motion and a second to take us into a closed session relating to personnel matters?
Mr. Chair, I move the York County School Board convening closed session to discuss personnel matters relating to specific employees pursuant to the Personnel Exemption Section 2.23711A1 of the Virginia Freedom of Information Act.
Do we have a second? Ms. Ford, we have a motion and a second.
Yes, the motion was made by Mr. Richardson and seconded by Mrs. Garalt for the board to meet in closed session to discuss personnel matters. Board, you may cast your vote. The motion passed five to zero. Thank you. You are now in closed session.
Hope everyone has a great week. We are now in closed session.